All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call to order the Fridley Public School Board's business meeting for March 19th, 2019. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll arise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin, do we have a motion to approve the agenda for the night's evening?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Prowado, second by Stark, to approve the agenda for March 19th. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Our next item is the spotlight on recognitions, beginning with the Employee of the Month for March, Dr. Ryle.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Riddle and school board meeting members. I am pleased to announce Employees of the Month for this month. So congratulations to the Fridley Public Schools' March 2019 Employees of the Month, and that would be the Custodial and Grounds Team at Fridley Public Schools. Throughout the winter, our Custodial and Grounds staff has put in an extra time before school, after school, and on weekends, says Building and Grounds Director Jason Bickler. They have been doing everything they can to keep the school safe for students and staff. In January and February of 2019, the Twin Cities metro area experienced record-breaking amounts of snowfall and dangerous wind chill. With extreme weather, the Custodial and the Grounds team worked tirelessly at all schools and buildings across the district, removing snow, de-icing, cleaning, and doing all they could to ensure the safety of others. I could not be more proud of the overall team effort that has taken place with employees, said Bickler. No matter if we are dealing with machinery that is down or dangerous wind chills, the team still does what is needed to make the facilities as safe as possible. They have been doing an awesome job and it shows. Fridley Public Schools would like to give a big thank you to our 23 members of our Custodial and Grounds team. We appreciate your work. We're going to identify each one of our team members. So congratulations to Jason Bickler, Warren Brewer, Tim Buttweiler, Michael Davis, Joshua Denzer, Danisha Dixon, Ashton George, Joseph Hamm, Seth Hamm, Vicky Johnson, Lance Kohler, Mark McLeary, John Medina, David Morgan, Casey Nelson, Kelly Nelson, Maximilian Nicole, Marty Nyhus, Jeffrey Regan, Kenesha Walker, Paul Walter Walker, William Warhol, Trent Wasaki, Alex Nguyen, and John Zerwas. And I just personally want to say thank you for our teams during this cold weather. There's times that some actually slept in buildings to make sure when pipes were freezing and it just has been a tremendous, incredible two months with the cold and now with some flooding and our team has been incredible. So I thank them for all of their work.
Yes, definitely. Well deserved, well deserved. Next up, we'll have superintendent and staff reports, beginning with an ALC presentation by Dr. Bodie.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Yeah, we're here tonight to discuss the Fridley Moore Lake Area Learning Center and give you a little bit of an overview. I know there's some new members to the board to give you a little bit of overview of what the ALC is and some updates on things that are happening this year. And I also brought a student with me that will have much better things to say than I do, so I'll just, I'll go through a few things for, for the sake of informing you about the ALC and then we'll have him come up and share his story too, so, thank you. Do I use my own clicker here? There we go. All right, so a little beginning about kind of what is the why to the ALC? Why do we exist? Why are we here? And to put it into simple terms, it's just to provide students who have been underserved by the traditional school system, a more flexible environment that allows them to complete the requirements for graduation. That's a big part of why we're there, is to find ways to help kids who need a different way get to graduation. And we're also, we're open to Fridley residents as well as students from many of our surrounding communities. Our what is to develop an educational foundation. What we think we do well there is creating a welcoming environment for all and modeling positive relationships. Many of our students come from backgrounds where they need some help with social interactions with other students and social interactions with adults and we try to be really good models for them. We deliver high-quality curriculum and instruction and, but also making it flexible for credit recovery options. And some ways we do that is we aren't so time-bound, so if a student has an assignment, there's not really a due date. The due date is when do you want to get it done and how soon do you want to graduate? So we allow them to work at their own pace. We break down, instead of having like an entire semester where you wait to get a grade and take the final, you can work through at your own pace and get it done. Certainly it takes time to do that, so it can't happen overnight, but students really get to work at their own pace and get to kind of choose their learning, so it's very personalized. And then we provide a lot of social emotional support. Our teachers do an excellent job with this and they really build strong relationships with our students, but we also have a social worker who is fantastic and she's really built a lot of strong relationships with those students that they come, a lot of reasons they come to school some days are to check in with her and help kind of navigate the rest of their world, not just school. And then we also do a great job of career exploration and development. Many, many of our students take, take the work seminar course and kind of learn what it is to have a job and what that looks like and then we help them find a job if they don't have one and they can earn elective credits towards graduation for that, so. And just a quick rundown, we're not a big staff, but we're mighty. We get a lot of things done. We have four, one, four teachers, one in each core area. We have a teacher on special assignment who serves to support me and the school as doing intakes for new students, helping update credit reports, being kind of another ear for students to help create schedules for them as they come in, really keeps the shit moving every day. And then like I had mentioned before, our social worker Mackenzie, she does a fantastic job with social emotional support for our students. And Jan is our administrative assistant. She's new this year and she's doing a great job. And then beyond just the day program for Fridley, Fridley ALC, we serve quite a bit across the district and I don't know if everybody quite knows how much, how far are, we reach out into the district. First of all, at the elementary level, we provide Elementary Learning Academy programming, so that's targeted services after school. Right now, first semester, we had 18 classes run between Stevenson and Hays and we had 319 elementary kids enrolled in that after school, so that's a big. Karen Beckstrand was a coordinator that works out of the Fridley Community Center here, helps me coordinate those programs after school. And then we also provide the summer school targeted services for elementary, so similar activities that happen after school. Also, there's courses that happen in the summertime to support learning and making sure kids are getting what they need. Middle school level, we have our Phoenix ALC program. There's about, give or take about 30 students in that every year and it's a place for students, similar to the high school program where they might just need a different environment to be successful. That's been a really fantastic program over the years. Again, middle school learning academy, similar to the elementary. It's not quite as robust as elementary, but we've had four classes and about 41 students in there for the first half of this year. And then we also provide middle school summer school and then also a few reading and literacy classes that are housed at the middle school. The ALC budget helps pay for the teachers for those, so. And then of course, we have our high school ALC day program, which I've talked about, but we also do extended day. We're a little busy over here, right? So we have extended day programming. That's largely, it's, it's for our ALC students if they choose to attend, but a lot of students who come to that are Fridley High School students who might be credit deficient and are up against graduation and they're a class or two behind and they have to find a way to make this happen. So we do that after school at the ALC building. And so far, I'll, I'll get to that at the end, I have a little bit of information about kind of what we've done with that. And then summer school, again through us for credit recovery, happens through the ALC and then we have some approaches to learning classes and EL classes at the high school that we also support. So you can't get away from us. And just a few examples of some things that have happened this year. One of the, we went into this year thinking about kind of more, a bigger thematic unit throughout the year about service learning and kind of understanding, the topic that came up was hunger and understanding what that looks like on a global level and a more local level. So some of our service projects and our field trips and our guest speakers have been around that topic. Our teachers also are teaching right now an elective class about hunger, now that we've learned a little bit about it. Taken some field trips, this was one of them, to Shoe Away Hunger. It was an interesting group because they work with another organization called Good in the Hood and they, and Shoe Away Hunger, so they, they collect shoes, donated shoes, they clean them and they kind of organize them and then there's a van or a vehicle that goes out in the communities and sells the shoes for a discounted price, for a reasonable price. And all the proceeds from that go into then creating meals for people who need them. So it's a, it was a really neat organization and our students had a really great time visiting there and participating in that. We did Feed My Starving Children, many of the schools do, but they, they did a great job and they packed 127 boxes, which led to about 27,000 meals. And then, Science Museum in Minnesota, we had a great time, I know, kind of across the board and Fridley students have got to visit the Science Museum. And for me, it was really interesting to see how engaged our students were with this trip because they were able to visit the mental health exhibit. And so many of them came back just saying like, I'm so glad that I, one student said, I'm so glad that I got to see this exhibit and now I can like understand what my friend's going through a little bit better. And many of them were, they were just so excited because a lot of them had never attended the Science Museum before and I was a former science teacher and it's like, you gotta go there. So I'm so happy they got, I got, they got that opportunity to go, so. Just a few more pictures of them there. And then this is just another list, I won't go through all of them, of different field trips or service learning partnerships or guest speakers and things that have come in. Our teachers have been really busy coordinating these and our students really enjoy them. And then moving on to the next topic, so we were identified by MDE to be part of a continuous improvement process this year that largely has to do with our graduation rates. So over a three-year period, our four-year graduate does not meet their benchmark of 67%. And I think this has become pretty clear across the state that all ALC, many, I think pretty much all ALCs are, are in this position. So it's really challenging for an ALC to have a graduation rate above 67% sometimes, largely because our students, we don't get them from day one. We don't get them all four years. And almost every student that comes to us is credit deficient, so now we're up against the clock with, we don't have them for four years and they're already credit deficient, so we really have to kind of accelerate and make up time. And so, you know, we, we just kind of looked at the situation and we kind of scratched our head when we, when we first were identified, but then we understood it's just a great opportunity for us to continue to improve. We already do a continuous improvement cycle, but now we're going to get a little support from MDE and some additional training opportunities and so just take it and let's run with it. So we, so our, our graduation rates for all students, the three-year average was 45% and then for free and reduced lunch students, it was 43.3. Those are the only two categories that we had enough students in a cell size to be able to, to count. And we did a root cause analysis earlier this year and what we came up with was two strategies, but the root cause really, it's the second bullet point there, it was that we do personalization of learning right now, but we need to do a more systemic job of it and really just get our, get all of our processes a little cleaner and a little faster and a little more efficient. We do a great job as it is, but we have room to improve. Not only for instruction, but also for the non-academic pieces, to make sure they're getting the basic needs met, mental health met, all those kinds of things met. So our first goal, our first strategy was to establish a comprehensive MTSS framework for academic support and just more, like I said, more in-depth. And that our goal then would be to be to reach that 67% for both our all-student population and free and reduced population by 2021, is what the state would like to see us do. And this is very similar, but in order to do that, then we need to implement a comprehensive professional development plan that would focus on personalized learning and those strategies to get us there, so. Just a quick rundown, so far we have 38 current seniors enrolled at the ALC. We've got about 70 students right now and five other fifth-year seniors, so students have come back to try to finish up. And then we have three students who have already graduated this year, have met the requirements, so we're super excited for them. We have eight seniors right now who we are really sure are going to graduate. They're very close, they're right on, on pace. And then we have another 11 that are within a year of graduation credit-wise and if they really, really worked hard, they might make it this year. If not, if they come back for summer school or next fall, they should be done pretty quickly. So we have quite a few kids that are right on that, that cusp right now. And additionally, I talked about extended day a little bit earlier. We currently have been serving and working with 38 of the Fridley High School students to help them towards graduation. And this is a little bit of a breakdown. We switched things up a little bit this year and you can see last year in the 2017, 18, we, we broke it down by quarter. We had about almost 40, we had a little over 43 credits earned across the year of the students that came to the ALC for credit recovery. So those 48, or 43 credits wouldn't have been able to be earned if we didn't exist. And this year, we, we did it more, we broke it down into more sessions and we focused on doing three-week sessions with students and really having them focus on one class at a time, so that wasn't too scattered and they were a little more focused. And we've done two sessions so far and you can see we've already recovered almost 18 credits worth. So I'll be curious to see if the new model will continue to yield those same results and we'll, we'll continue to help more kids earn more credit and graduate on time. And then lastly, I've done a lot of talking, but the star of our show here is Abdouhab. When I thought about who could come up and, and tell, tell his story and do a great job of it, he was one of the first that came to mind and I won't take any of his thunder away, I'll let him go ahead. Thank you.
Hey, thank you guys very much. My name is Abdouhab Eden, but you guys could call me Abdi. I came from the Fridley Alternative Learning Center. I don't really consider it an alternative learning center. I almost consider it like a chance to make yourself a better person as a whole. See, when I came to the school, I started off with only 14.071 credits and I was a junior. I didn't really think I was going to get however much credits I would need for me to graduate by senior year. I really had no hope. All classes to me was spread out. I tried to do classes here and there, but at the end of the year, that didn't really add up to much. But this year, when I came back, I tried to fight back for my own. Feel me? I tried to get help like I did not get last year by starting off with Mr. Bodie. He was, he was the one guy who showed me that I was more than who I thought I was. I was smarter than what I could be. Feel me? Ever since I started, I slowly graduated, I mean, I slowly graduated to getting 18 credits by two terms. And then now I finally got to 23 credits, honestly. And I've been really working hard for Mackenzie, the social worker, who helped me through any struggles that I had by calming me down and stopping me from saying, matter of fact, I quit, let me just drop out and leave. I had Jenny, who was like a mother to me, who I know I did not have her class done in the beginning, but now I have her class done and I'm starting to read books, which I honestly never thought I would do. But.
Good for you.
Good for you.
And then I had Donna, the science teacher. I was never really good at science, honestly. But I finished a class though.
Good job.
So what I'm basically saying overall, my thoughts on the ALC was the teachers is more than just a teacher, somebody who's here to give you assignments, somebody who's there to tell you to finish that. They're more like a collective whole. Feel me? They're like your brain cells, they're like your family. They help you grow. And that's what they have been doing for me. And honestly, without them, I don't think I would be anywhere near where I am today, especially with books. So I love books now.
Yay!
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story.
Well, thank you and, you know, it's a testament to our staff how hard they work to create an environment where students can come in and have that experience and make progress towards graduation, so thank you Abdouhab for sharing and joining us. Really appreciate that and there's many, many stories like this and feel free to ever stop by and see us and say hello and does the board have any questions or anything else?
I'd like to know what Abdi's plans are after graduation.
We were just talking about that.
Okay, so, I'm back. So me and Bodie were talking earlier about what I wanted to do after high school and I didn't really think about that until he brought it up to me. And when I was starting school, I was like, oh, I'm just going to finish high school and I'm done, I'm straight. Cause, oh wow, I don't want to go take four more years at college, that's, that's me. It's basically high school all over again. So we were thinking a little bit and I came up with a plan to kind of balance out two things that I wanted to do, which was use my voice to communicate with people and understand them very well and also make profit.
Great.
So.
Smart me.
So, so I thought about going into psychology field, going and then learning people, how they talk, how they communicate, and then after I'm done with that, joining the trade industry and hopefully put those together and advertise what I can and hopefully just grow an industry and business there.
Great.
I have one more question. I have one question. What do you like reading?
Oh, one book that I just finished reading was called Leon. Okay, it's, it's a really, it's a really sad book. To all my black guys, you really going to get mad if you read it? You really going to get pissed? But stay true, cause you know, he survived. It's about 200 pages. If you guys just want to get started on it, it's really good, trust me.
You could also be a comedian too. Great job. Thanks for sharing your story. Wonderful.
Now, the inevitable that someone has to follow that and that is going to have to follow to you, Ms. Seifert-Hurtling, and talking about translations and special education.
This is just as good.
Thank you for having us this evening. We do, we have some fun things for you guys to see. Thank you for letting us come and share our journey tonight. For special services, we decided to invite our assistive technology team and this team is sitting behind me right now and they have been working, it's through the Department of, Minnesota Department of Education offers assistive technology support to districts and we are on year three and we have been working really hard to just build an understanding of what assistive technology is because at every IEP meeting, we should be talking about assistive technology and considering it. So we are on year three, like I said, and these wonderful women are going to share our journey that we've been on for the last three years, so I'm going to invite them up right now and they're going to come share about assistive technology.
So year one, we created these assistive technology boxes and like Laura said, our main goal was just to create awareness and just define the definition of what assistive technology is and look at it more as tools, not just high-tech, but look at low-tech, mid-tech. So there's a box in each building.
We can show some of the tools. You want to read the definition? Because I think when we think assistive technology, we think computers and iPads.
Yes, so.
Can I excuse you just for a second for Mr. Weber? Would you mind speaking into the microphone when you read it? Thank you.
So assistive technology is any piece of equipment, item, modified, customized device that is used to increase, maintain, or improve functional capabilities of children with disabilities. So again, we want to think assistive tools and again, low-tech, high-tech, mid-tech.
So some of the things that are in our box are this assistive writing tool, visual timers, and then we have these GoTalk ones and it's just, these are, Amanda uses these in her classroom and she'll talk a little bit more about them later, but there's just a bunch of different types of tools in our toolboxes that kind of help build an understanding of what these assistive technology tools can be.
Now, these tools are in all the buildings based on the types of what the students would need at their basic grade levels, correct?
Correct. Yep. All right, and year two, so then year two, we kind of took information from all of our teachers to determine what they needed next to keep moving this forward and we created this hyperlink that is available on our webpage for the specialty teachers to click on and it helps walk them through anything they need, if they need help putting it in the IEP, the wording for the IEP, so we have consistent wording throughout the district on our IEPs. We have a link for that where we actually typed up a whole bunch of statements.
For the folks in the audience, can you let them know what the IEP stands for?
It's Individualized Education Plan, so any child who's in special education has one that is written for them initially coming in and then we rewrite it every single year after that to make sure that we're updating it and keeping pace with their needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So yeah, we have just all sorts of ideas on here, what's in assistive technology tool. We even have links to different websites that they can go on to get new and fresh ideas. And then we've taken some of those websites in addition and we've put them on staff pages. I know at the high school, we have it linked, some links to some of the websites on our staff pages for general education teachers to access and use as well. And year three, so for year three, we actually got a pilot program through, through a company called TextHelp and the program is called Read and Write. It's an extension on Google Chrome, since most of our students have access to a Chromebook. We got it pushed out for every single student regardless of disability or ability and it has some really awesome tools on that toolbar. For example, it has text to speech, so, and then it will also track the word that it's reading. So our students who struggle to read can use text to speech on any word on any website or any Google Doc. It also has like word prediction and the cool part about that is it even has phonetic spelling. And so if a child spells phone, for example, F-O-N, it will actually correct and predict that they're trying to spell phone and they can, it'll give them a list of 10 words that it's thinking they're trying to spell and they can hover over it and it'll speak it to them. So then it increases their accuracy and their spelling. It has a speech to text, so they can speak into the microphone on the computer and it will type what they're saying. And it has a whole bunch of other tools, like a translator for students who speak another language. It also has some vocabulary tools, so they can make a list of vocabulary items that, and it will automatically create the list for them based on what they've highlighted. And then speaking of the highlighters, it highlights, so it can organize and keep their resources organized in papers and it will keep any websites that they've highlighted words on organized by the website. So if they need to go back to that website, they can go into that, that list and then click on the website link there. But that's available to all students and so that's been really cool for them to be able to use and I've been training some teachers on how to use it with students. I've trained students on how to use it and I'm at the elementary schools and I've been working with a lot of fourth graders and even these nine and 10-year-olds, they know what they struggle with and therefore they themselves are choosing the right tools that work for them, that's benefiting them. And so that's been really cool to see that they've just taken off with this and so that's been really fun. And we've been training paraprofessionals on how to teach students how to use this, even down to like first grade, because some of the first graders have computers in their classroom and so a lot of them are going to struggle to read, they're only in first grade, but they've done a really nice job with being able to use this toolbar, so.
And I'll just share one story about a student using a different tool. I was working with a high schooler student, or a high school student who participated in the sophomore personal project and she is a non-verbal student and she was able to use this iPad with a voice output app that allowed her to program her presentation and then she could just use the touchscreen to share it with her audience. So for example.
My project is about the Midwest Great Dane rescue.
And she could go through it and kind of answer some questions from her audience and things like that. It was really exciting to see the independence and just the possibilities that she was able to have because of this.
So in my classroom, I'm an elementary school teacher at Stevenson and I've been using our GoTalk buttons and switches for my students to communicate. And on some of the switches, you can program a simple sentence or a simple phrase. So I have good morning and then my students can hit it that are non-verbal and it'll say, good morning, Miss Will, as they enter the classroom and I pair it with a picture. And then our GoTalk buttons, you can insert a picture in it and record a simple phrase as well. And I attach these to some of the desks for my students to communicate if they want more or if they're all done. And so it's a great way for my students to communicate that otherwise they would not be able to, so.
So that has been what we've been doing kind of over the last three years. This year three has really been focusing on getting the word out with the tools and how to use the tools. Again, we talked about some low-tech up to high-tech tools, so we think assistive technology and we address those needs on the IEPs. It's really looking at what are those needs? So you want to look at the student, you want to look at that environment that they're going to be doing the work in and then you want to look at just kind of what tools might match, what they're going to be doing in the classroom. So we've been doing a lot of great work and this team is an amazing team. They've been a lot of fun to work with and we've just, we're hoping we're building that independence in students, because that is the goal, is building that independence and looking at that 21-plus and what they're going to do beyond when they leave us. Does anyone have any questions for anyone?
I just want to commend, commend you for this great work. I mean, special education really is an area that serves our most vulnerable population. So to see them empowered and motivated and engaged will definitely lead to, you know, achievement and students liking the school more and, you know, the environment. So you're truly special, so we just appreciate the work that you're doing for our students and our staff and we, hopefully, you know, this will continue and we'll be able to sustain it and get the funding for this to spread in our district and. sustain it and get the funding for this to spread in our district and be available to our students. So we thank you for, you know, for what you're doing, yeah.
Thank you so much. It's a lot of work by these wonderful people and a lot of the teachers, so thank you all very much for letting us present tonight. Thank you.
Now, I'll move on to our business action items. Every month, we're fortunate enough from our population and around the area to receive gifts from the community, and this month, we received the following gifts. The persons, following persons donated to Fridley Middle School, Bob's Produce Ranch had fifty-box lunches for the judges for the History Day competition, and Leah Likness donated ten dollars. Donating to Hayes Elementary School for a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars was Deanna Roth, and donating to the Fridley Community Education for a total of two-hundred dollars were the Northside Bag Ladies and Pauline Rotewald. With that, do I have a motion to accept these gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
Motion moved.
Second.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Thornton, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Handler, could you please call a roll?
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Our next up is a second reading and adoption of several policies. Again, Ms. Seifert-Hurtling.
Good evening, Mr. Riddle, Superintendent Hile, I'm a member of the school board. Thank you for having me tonight. Tonight, I bring to you the second reading for the adoption of policies. Policy 507, corporal punishment and use of force. Policy 516, student medication. Policy 526, hazing prohibition, and policy 530, student immunization requirements, and there was some discussion, and I looked, asked you to accept these policies this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the second reading and adoption of those policies?
Motion to accept the second reading.
Second.
Have a motion by Prueado, seconded by Adam, to accept the second reading and adoption of policies 507, 516, 526, and 530. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up is a motion for the school board meeting calendar for July of 2019 through June 2020. We discussed, talking about looking at the calendar on that, and with really, the main difference between the two calendars was whether or not we needed a July meeting, and we determined that in July nineteenth, uh, 2019, excuse me, that we would have a meeting that night, so we have a calendar that's going to include that. Do, let's see, do we have a motion for, I think we have previously approved this, do we need a separate motion for that? I know we've got it on our agenda as a motion item, but we don't have it written as a motion, so I guess I would, do I have a motion to approve the calendar as we?
So moved. Second.
So I have a motion by Stark, seconded by Thornton, to approve the calendar for July 2019 through 2020 as presented. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. And our final business action item for this evening is approval for the bid of the Hayes Parking Lot Construction Project to be take place during the summer of 2019. Mr. Tillman?
Chair Riddle, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Hile, here to request approval of the recommended bid for the Hayes Elementary Parking Lot Project. Little background on this, on the, on March twelfth, we had final bid opening, we had received seven bids, which were all competitive. Batuminus put in the lowest bid at two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, which was below our project budget from the LTFM. We have experience working with Batuminus Roadways on projects similar to this one. They completed the middle school parking lot project last year. We found their overall performance, workmanship, scheduling, and quality control generally be good, and so we recommend that you approve this bid.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Batuminus Roadways for the parking lot construction at Hayes for the summer of 2019?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Prueado, seconded by Adam, to approve the bid of Batuminus Roadways for the parking lot construction at Hayes for the summer of 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda. It's the regular action items, including the meeting minutes from the regular school board, the work session that were held on February nineteenth, 2019, the monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements, and as well as the information regarding the life insurance and long-term disability changes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Stark, seconded by Thornton, to approve the consent agenda of the routine items I mentioned. I would like to bring to mind that Gary Lind, a longtime teacher at the middle school, has over twenty years of service, we couldn't figure out exactly whether it was twenty-four or twenty-five, but certainly plenty of years of service there at the middle school, and wanna thank him for all of his years of service for that. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda passes. Next up is written information, beginning with student enrollment. Dr. Hile?
Thank you. I would like to share our student enrollment as of March first. We did have a slight decline of about thirteen students, saw a slight, slight increase in elementary as well as in middle school, and our decline in high school is generally showing a pattern that we generally have of where a lot of our students that go to ALC to Mr. Bodie to get credits in order to be able to graduate on time, and then we have a few students with PSCOs, so this is normal for our pattern that we see each year.
Thank you. Next up is the first reading of several policies, beginning with the wellness policy. Ms. Oftedall?
Board Chair Riddle, board members, Superintendent Hile, I'm here to present for its first reading, the wellness policy. The wellness policy revisions reflect discussion with the Wellness Committee as well as alignment with the Healthy and Hunger-Free Kids Act, bringing that into alignment with that, with that piece of legislation. I would submit it for the first reading.
Thank you. The second policy we have up is policy 202. It's a school board officers' policy. While we've had a policy similar to this, we thought we'd get a little bit more in-depth with regard to all the roles of the various officers, including chair, vice chair, treasurer and clerk. We had some good discussion during the work session on a few changes, but we have that out for its also first reading. Then we also have several others, beginning with two, or the final policy and procedures is policy 203. Dr. Hile?
Thank you. Policy 203, under governing rules for the school board, we have a couple changes in regards to, under the category of delegation to the superintendent, we are changing the wording, a state school board member shall direct requests for information primarily to the superintendent. We changed, instead of designating each department, we changed it to org-designee. So that's a change we're requesting for that, as well as under the category of order of precedent, letter B, it states specifically, the specific rules of order is provided by the school board consistent with the Minnesota statutes and rules of the Department, Minnesota Department of Children, Families, and Learning. That department has been changed to the Minnesota Department of Education, so those changes were made as well. And then our last change falls under news, media, and school board relations. We changed from the statement of the school board and the superintendent's office will administer the public information program, that was changed to the superintendent office and the school board chair will collaborate on all media responses, making it more understandable for those who read the policy. Our next one, we have policy 203.1, which is specific order, excuse me, the specific rules of order for meetings. We have no changes on that policy. Our next policy we have is 203.2, and that falls under preparation of the school board meeting agendas. The main change on that one was, we moved procedures into its own policy sheet, and that's 203.2P for procedures, preparation of the school board meeting agenda procedures. And that's what we have today for changes in these areas.
Thank you. As is always, those will be on our website if anyone is interested in the public of reading these policies, so. Next up is reports from school board members. We have an Association of Metropolitan School Districts board meeting that was held on March first. Dr. Hile?
Thank you. The AMSD meeting on March first, we had a guest speaker there, and our guest speaker was Representative Dave Pinto, and Mr. Pinto represents the area of St. Paul, sixty-four B in the St. Paul School District. The main area in which Mr. Pinto works with is the Early Childhood Finance and Policy Division, and he shared with us, one of their main goals is looking at the trajectory of important issues that impacts our young students from prenatal to age three. He also stated to continue to support the districts who currently have pre-K, to continue to support that. Our own personal district is looking for continued support, our main pre-K that funds all of our students, but we only received two-year funding for about forty-five students, and we are waiting for our legislator to continue to support that, so we can continue our very strong pre-K program that we have in Fridley. Mr. Pinto also stated that through research and with the people that he's working with, that it's already, opportunity gaps are seen by our children by the age of three, so the importance of working with our students from prenatal on to make sure our families and our students, even prior to them becoming students, and our children get their needs met at a young age. There was large conversation around e-learning days due to the number of snow days that we have had this year. We had three schools present that are currently doing e-learning or flexible days, or some are called connecting learning days, but it's days in which students can still receive learning when schools are closed. So Shakopee Public Schools and Farmington Schools and Robbinsville Schools also shared how they were going through the process on some of the days that we missed of school, providing learning for students when they were at home. The Minnesota Department of Education is also working with schools and helping guide schools on how to create flexible or e-learning days for our students when such weather occurs, and it's something in our district we will be working on, and our goal is to have a plan completed by the end of the summer for the board to approve, so our parents are informed of what that possible plan could be by the beginning of the school year.
Thank you. Finally up, we have important future school board dates. The Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board will meet tomorrow night, March twentieth, at the Northwest Suburban District offices. The next Northeast Metro 916 board meeting will be held April third at six PM at the Bel Air School. The next AMSD board meeting, directors meeting, excuse me, will be held April twelfth at the Cora Education Center. Schools for Equity in Education will have an April twelfth, nine AM, at the Radisson Hotel, and our next Fridley Public School Board meeting will be held April sixteenth, work session beginning at five-thirty, open forum at seven, and our business meeting at seven-thirty here at the Fridley Community Center. I'd also like to put out the Fridley School Foundation's Black and Gold Gala at Jack's Cafe will be being held March twenty-ninth, and there are still tickets, twenty-eighth, excuse me, twenty-eighth, I had twenty-eighth written down, and I said twenty-ninth. It'll be held at Jack's Cafe, and there are still seats there, so if anybody's interested, they can go to the Fridley Schools Foundation website and sign up for that. Unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Have a motion by Stark, seconded by Prueado, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we adjourned at eight-thirteen.